It did take an hour today.
Minutes take hours.
Okay, we ready to go?
Yep.
We are.
Let me call the Berkeley City Planning Commission to order for its regular meeting of Tuesday, December the ninth, two thousand and fourteen. Would you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a roll call, please.
Smith?
Here.
Morell?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Buckler?
Here.
Pop?
Here.
Murad?
Here.
Shadle?
Here.
Tengari? Burnett?
Present. Now, I will take a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Murad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Murad?
Yes.
Smith?
Yep.
Buckler?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Do we have any communications?
Just the DDA minutes.
Okay. Then I'll open the floor to citizens' comments. Any citizen who would care to address the Planning Commission on any topic not on our agenda may do so at this time. Step up to the microphone, state your name and city of residence. I will remind citizens they do have an opportunity to participate in discussion and items as we move through the regular agenda. Seeing no citizens rushing to the microphone, I guess I'll close that portion of the meeting. Citizens will have an opportunity later in the meeting this evening to address the Planning Commission. So I guess we're ready to go. Item number one.
Item number one is public hearing to receive public input regarding proposed changes to Berkeley City Code Article Two, Definitions, Section One Thirty-eight Thirty-two, Definitions, Building Height.
Before I open a public hearing, are there any comments from the Planning Commission? Mr. Murad?
Looks good to me.
All right, then I guess I'll open the public hearing. Any citizens would care to comment on the motion, on the, we don't have motion yet, on the item before us, may step up to the microphone. Seeing nobody having any comments, I'll close the public hearing. What is the desire of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Martin Smith?
Seeing or hearing the approval from the public, I'd like to move this along to City Council for their, for their approval, hopefully.
So you're making a motion to?
Absolutely.
Is there a second to the motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I guess we'll take a roll call vote.
Buckler?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Martins? Smith?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
One down. Item number two.
Item number two is a public hearing to receive public input regarding proposed changes to Berkeley City Code, Chapter One Thirty-eight zoning, Article Three, General Provisions, Division Six, Supplementary Regulations, Section One Thirty-eight, One Ninety-two, Projections in Two Yards.
Before I open a public hearing, any comments or anything from the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I think-
Mr. Martin Smith?
I think Ms. Vansen picked up everything we talked about in our previous meeting, so once again, I think we're good to go.
Okay. Any other comments?
I note-
Mr. Richardson?
I note that the proposed height is eleven feet. River Afternoon is the Martin Smith height rule.
Random height rule.
Other than that, no, I think everything's here.
Good.
It's gonna be challenging court.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. Any citizens who would care to respond or comment on the proposed ordinance change may step up to the microphone, state your name, address, and you may have the floor. Seeing, seeing anybody rushing to the microphone, I guess I'll close the public hearing. What is the desire of the Planning Commission? Mr. Murad?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend this for adoption to the City Council.
Is there a second to the motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Vansen, you want to call the roll, please?
Morell?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
All right.
Moving on to item three.
Item three is site plan review, SP-oh eight fourteen, Jeff Hutchinson for Babci LLC, three-three-eight-seven through three-three-nine-one, Twelve Mile, southeast corner of Twelve Mile in Buckingham, is requesting site plan approval for a facade change and site work.
Good evening. I represent the owner and contractor of the building here in town, here to address the question in this whole place.
Your name?
Jeff Hutchinson.
Jeff Hutchinson, thank you, Jeff. Okay. Do you want to briefly describe a little bit about what we're doing, what you're proposing to do to the site and give us a little bit of background?
The existing site was appropriately renovated, I believe, at least, closed some time ago. The proposal is to develop it for, in its current configuration, current footprint, for, for either some retail or maybe some office use. There's, there's a lot of potential tenants that we've discussed it with, but really it's taking advantage of the DDA parking and some walking district there and beautifying the front of the building and making it attractive to potential tenants so that it can be leased and used and not, you know, remain abandoned, basically.
Okay, I'll throw it to the Planning Commission. Comments?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Richardson, you have it.
I live in the neighborhood and this isn't really a terribly important question, but it's been a subject of dinner table debate in my house. How long has it been since that property's been occupied? Does anybody know?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six. Ninety-six, thank you. Another question is, do you intend to leave the gate at the rear parking lot or do you intend to remove that gate?
I think that that gate would have to be removed. I think that the masonry wall that's on Buckingham there would need to be removed as well.
Okay.
To provide clear vision, as Amy pointed out in some of her comments. I think that, by code, I think the screen wall that's on the south side of the property, the east side of the property is probably too short and is going to be, need to be increased as part of the renovation. But the enclosed feel for the back lot should be eliminated as part of the renovation.
Just one other question. Do you anticipate that the, if, if the businesses that are put in there are retail businesses, that the most utilized entrances would be off the rear parking lot?
Without, without any near public parking, I think that, that makes common sense. I mean, it has to be off the, the backside of the building because there's, there's no curb side parking, there's no, there's no immediate public lot near there. There's a couple of spots that may be able to be used on Buckingham there where the existing curb line is, but those are details we'd need to work out with.
Do you think it might be advisable to back off the doorways from the parking area a little bit and perhaps dress them up or recess them into the, into the, into the wall in order to, to make those entrances a little more, a little more substantial?
On the, on the south side of the building?
Yeah, on the, on the south side. I think you, you're calling for metal doors right now.
We are calling for metal doors. We could do, we could do canopies. We could, we could do something to, to make it more appealing on the backside of the building if that's what your question is.
All right, those are all the questions I had for now.
Okay. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murad?
With the parking along the back wall on the south side of the building, I'd like to see curb bumpers there so people don't drive into the wall. Prevent that.
We're talking about the parking blocks?
Yeah, the parking blocks.
Not a, not a concrete wheel stop?
Yeah. The other concern I have is the location of the dumpster. You're putting it right underneath the power lines.
I saw that as well, yeah.
Yeah.
That was poorly planned, I agree.
And since you do have municipal parking credits, you could probably lose that one parking spot there and just kind of move it over. And then it's kind of a straight shot in for the garbage trucks, too. And then, I don't know, how big is the dumpster enclosure? You don't have dimensions on that.
It would be, be eight by ten, I believe. I'd have to look at the single width.
Yeah, 'cause with that location, too, that last parking space you have there would be a little tight to get a car in and out of, so you might want to eliminate that space.
Which space is that?
That's the one right at the back of the building.
The one that says five on it?
And then the other one I'm saying to eliminate maybe is number one and put the, the dumpster in that location. And then I think you need more space for the handicap space. So eliminating that one space down at the end might help you shift that around and make that better.
While, while we understand the, the value of the parking credits, we also don't, don't want to create a functional issue there where we, we cheat the building of too many parking spaces. So we've tried to be conscious of that.
Okay, appreciate that. And then the other thing I was wondering, just kind of looking at this, you know, I know you have that walkway coming in for, off of the sidewalk on Twelve Mile, but I'm wondering if your tenants would appreciate if each one had a walkway?
We're, we're considering that now as well. What it's tough to tell is, is how many tenants will be within that space.
Right, yeah.
The east, the east bay of the building that's been recently re-roofed is a shallow bay, and that's only a two thousand square foot footprint, and I didn't see a need for more than one there because I can't see ever having less than a two thousand square foot tenant in there, but-
Right.
We can look at the, the west side as well.
Okay. That's all I had for now. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Martin Smith?
I believe everybody up here is very happy to see something going on there, and it's been a long time. It's been a fairly unfortunate chunk of property on Twelve Mile Road. I have concerns, some concerns about the parking also. And Commissioner Murad picked up a llama. I think you might want to talk to your architect because your, your, your barrier-free space is not in compliance with the-
Look, that more closely.
Yeah, with the, the barrier-free section of the, the building code. And, and the dumpster underneath those wires, I was out there, it was only kind of dark when I was out there this afternoon, this evening, but it was, those wires are pretty low and I don't know. Well, first of all, your dumpster, I don't, as, as, as shown there, I don't think it's quite large enough. If it's eight by ten, you may want to have, look at that. And if, depending on how they're going to empty that dumpster, we certainly don't want the truck lifting up because I think those wires, those wires are real low.
No, that's, that's something we need to clean up. I would agree with that.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that's the last thing we want to happen.
Yeah, that would be a surprise for everybody involved. I'm, I'm very concerned about the, the, the drive, and I didn't pace it off, but according to the drawings here, it's about, at, on the west side of the property, from the, 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 the screen wall to the back of your building, it looks like it's only about thirty-five feet from the drawings. Now, out of the sight, it looked a little, a little wider, but that could be deceiving. Do we, when we have ninety-degree parking, Amy, it's a twenty-foot drive, right?
Yeah, at, yeah, at least.
Yeah, and, and, so you're, you're four, five, you're, well, you're five feet, five feet short of making that work. Now, I think it'd be a good idea to reconsider your parking, maybe it's angle parking or something, because there's a lot of people. Now, I, I think before, these would be, would these be customers back here or employees?
It's gonna be both.
You might have some surprises with your, the back of your building, people trying to maneuver their way out of that parking lot.
That's why angle parking was, was concerning.
Yeah, so I think there may be another opportunity to, to develop some parking here or redevelop the, the, the organization of the parking. Bumper blocks are a good idea. Some people stop their car when they hit something, so it'd be a good idea to have them hit a block instead of the wall. Is that wall five feet tall now along the south property line? You know, I meant to measure it and I forgot.
I, I, it's not six feet, I know that, I'm not sure how tall.
Are we gonna require as part of this being upgraded to, it may just be one course of block or something?
They-
I mean, it's been this, this way forever.
Right.
And, and-
I, I know there's complications when you start adding-
I know.
-to things, and I know there's, there have been instances when it's just a facade that we've, that you've all have let it stay the way it is.
I personally don't have a problem believing it the way it is. It's just, you know, if it were a new wall or if it was in horrible shape, they had to rebuild it, of course we want it to be six feet high, but it seemed to be five or a tad higher than five, so I don't know if that's gonna, I don't think that's an issue, at least for me. Where the parking opens up on the east side, I think you have enough space. You may want to talk to your architect, that, that, that sidewalk at the, behind Tennessee and D, is that a, a raised curb or is that, would be just marked?
It's a raised curb.
Okay. May want to consider, you have plenty of space here, a seven-foot curb because again, cars overhang. Now, we allow them to take the two feet out of the parking space, do we not, Amy? So the overall dimension doesn't change, but, but if you have a five-foot sidewalk and the front end of a car hanging over, you're right at the door when someone opens a three-foot door. So maybe a seven-foot curb and an eighteen-foot parking space accomplishes the same thing, protects the-
And if you could get rid of the bumper blocks, then?
Yeah, you don't need, if that's a curb, you don't need bumper blocks. Yeah, yeah. And you did say that the west wall and gate will probably be removed?
Yes.
That's, that's a good idea. Okay. And I was gonna ask you what's going on in, in the back, which would be the southeast corner, but I think we may want you to come back and look at, with a reorganized parking. In my opinion, I'm one of, I guess we're all here now, one of nine, but I think I would like to see you come back because I'm really concerned about the narrowness of that drive. Dumpster details, we always want to see dumpster details and that on the drawings. There's a couple light fixtures I think were proposed on the building. Were you planning on putting any additional lighting in the parking area?
No.
Okay.
I'll do a photometric, but to be sure that reaches the south property, but-
And not beyond?
And not beyond.
Okay.
I, I had hoped to avoid poles, you know.
I don't blame you. But, you know, there'll be need, yeah, the, you'll need it to be shielded in some way and the, the trick will be getting them out there, but not go beyond. That's, that's the trick. This was probably a storage yard for the, the previous facility. So, but now we have customers and evenings like today, it's pretty dark out there in the evening, so lighting will be important. And the interior isn't really too much of our business, but on the demolition plan, excuse me, on the demolition plan, it shows this, what appears to be a masonry wall between the two buildings to be, remain, and then when, when you go to the building plan, it looks like there's a, a potential demising wall in that location. That may just be-
The intent was for that, that masonry wall to remain as a demising wall.
Is it load-bearing?
It is load-bearing.
Yeah.
And, you know, if, if it was a shared tendency on either side of that, we'd do some large punched openings with some beams and things like that.
Okay, and that's up to the building department to decide of what your square footage is. I know some of these are, they're masonry walls, they could be firewalls, they may not be firewalls, it all depends on what the occupancy is, you know that. So, okay, that's not really our business, I just wanted to-
Yep.
Elevations are fine. Amy calculated, we require forty percent of windows, you're thirty-eight percent of, per Amy's calculations.
I was surprised at that. It seemed bigger.
It seems bigger than that, but I'll take your calculations. I, I don't have a problem with thirty-eight percent on this particular case.
But I was surprised at that.
And I, okay, I guess nobody else does either. So, that's not an issue. It's certainly a little more pleasing to the eye than the existing north elevation. And substantially. And any signage would be a separate permit, you know that.
Yep.
Bear with me, just going through my notes. Okay, you talked about the wall being removed and I saw you have a new flat roof going on the, on the east half already. It looked like there's a new membrane spread out over the roof.
The deck was replaced.
Looks like you did some water problems.
Restoration.
Yeah.
There was some steel angle that had to be replaced and the roof is done. It's a matter of coping going on, and I'd prefer not to do the coping until the facade is done. So we've kind of winterized it. I've got a, I've got a few locations where the bar joists stick through that we're gonna seal up, but other than that, it's, it's pretty well wrapped up for the time being.
Though there should be a couple art rooftop units up here also.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like you had some water damage going back on the southeast corner there.
More than that.
Maybe the whole east end. Yeah, okay. Or that, I think is a great addition. Really, my, my concern out of all of this is, is the layout of the parking, and I, I don't think, I'm not happy with it. I'm, I'm sure several of my, several of the other commissioners here would feel the same way. I think that needs, that needs to be looked at again.
Understood.
And, and provide some dumpster details and photometrics.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I got a couple.
More?
Morell?
As a lifelong resident of Berkeley, I too think this is well-conditioned.
Yeah.
Although I do remember having my radiator fixed a couple of times when I was there. My first question, are all the windows shown to be windows along the south wall, along the back of this building, going to be windows?
As far as the replacement of the overhead doors with glass?
Are, are you gonna be able to see through them, is, is my question?
Yes, that's the intention.
Okay.
We, we want to introduce some sunlight into there.
I think, well, I think when it comes time to, to design restrooms into these, you may have some trouble. I'm looking at it right now and, and tenant D and, and tenant A hardly have a space where you might possibly put a seven-foot square restroom. It's just something to think about when it comes time to lay these tenant spaces out. Also, there is a, a window missing on the plan, on the site plan, in the, on the west, on the west wall. It shows up on the elevation, it's not on the plan. Yeah, I'm a little concerned. As a guy who owns a full-size Dodge Ram pickup, I'd be a little concerned trying to make these, some of these parking spots. In fact, I'm sure I couldn't, the first five or six that are in here. And since the, since there isn't a requirement per se for this space due to the fact that, I, I know you have to, you still have to serve your, your clients in here, I too am a little concerned. Actually, I'm more concerned for your building than I am really the parking. It seems to me like you'd be, you'd have people smacking that building pretty, pretty often, just trying to back out. I also share the concern that as a kid who grew up here in Berkeley, yeah, I'd have no trouble walking over this grass to get to one, to get to tenant C or D if there wasn't a sidewalk there. I think that that's, I think that that's probably cheap insurance as far as not having to maintain too much landscaping in that location. Regarding the thirty-eight percent, I, I think the intent of our ordinance has been met. There's no question that these buildings are retail in character, and I wouldn't dream of, of holding him for that extra one point nine percent. You know, if you look at the, the linear, if you take a percent in terms of the linear face of this, the thing's like ninety percent windows.
Yeah.
Just don't take area. I think he's got that.
Yeah.
There has been a comment, and I'm, I'm not sure if I heard it here yet, about the second exit for tenant A almost being out into the driveline. The one thing I will say is that because it's only a two thou, well, let's see, you don't have a, you don't really, you've got a second exit for tenant B.
Yeah.
As an eighteen-hundred-square-foot tenant space, you only need one exit. The opportunity exists there. I mean, I think there's a potential traffic hazard there. If you're gonna do a glass door, I think it might be okay. I, Ms. Vansen's report did say that maybe you could pocket it. Quite frankly, you could also swing it in, and that would, that would solve your problem. I'm sure that-
There's a possibility it could drop off onto Buckingham as well.
That'd be even better.
Right, that'd be even better.
Better.
Yeah. You could just swing it over to the side.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's really all I've got for now.
All right. Other comments?
Yeah.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion and do some, give some clarification, what you want to do, and we'll proceed.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, Mr. Martin Smith, you're up.
I guess the consensus I hear is we're happy with the building. There's some rework to be done in, in the rear. And also the DPW had a few comments that have to be addressed. So I'd like to make the motion to postpone site plan review, SP-oh eight fourteen, and have them come back with the, the following. And, and everybody help me out here as usual if I forgot something. Take a look at the parking arrangement. I think, and I know they want to service their, their, their customers, I'm rambling here, but bear with me. I notice they want to service their customers with parking spaces, but to sacrifice a couple spaces, I think they can make this parking lot work a lot better. So revisit the parking layout, or have your architect revisit the parking layout, including the dumpster location. We'd like to see the dumpster enclosure details and photometrics. There's also a requirement that we didn't bring up regarding bicycle parking. You need some bicycle parking, and that's easy to put in here somewhere. Look that up in the ordinance. In the DPW comments, which I think you already know, there's some other suggestions made, made along the way. I don't know, they have to be part of the, the motion, the, the barrier-free space has to be reworked. Maybe put a seven-foot wide curb behind C and D, maybe swing some doors. Pardon me? Well, I think that's up to him. If he wants to do it, fantastic. If there's a dirt path there, that's how college campuses do it. They wait until, watch where the kids go and then they put sidewalks in. So that, to me, is up to him unless someone else feels strongly about it. So in a rambling sort of way, as usual, that's my motion. If anybody else has some comment.
Remove the gate.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was so obvious, I forgot to mention. Remove the west wall and the gate. Thank you.
Do we want the lights of the wall?
I think we'll leave it.
Leave it. I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
Leave it, I don't have a problem with it, if we wanna take a poll, but I don't personally.
Do we need to take a poll unless?
I don't, I don't.
No, I don't think so.
I don't either, I think we'll just leave it.
That wouldn't hold up another approval.
No. Any other comments, is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion, but, but I do wanna, do wanna make a comment that, you know, if you are gonna change those back walls, you know, we regard these site plans as what you're gonna show us, what we approve is what you're gonna build, of course. So, if you're gonna make any changes to those, the time to do it.
Is now.
Is during this postponement.
Right.
Back, back walls of the building?
Yeah, I talked about, I talked about where you're gonna put the toilet rooms.
The rear facade.
And, and some difficulties you're gonna have, and, and so my point would be that if you're gonna, like, if you're gonna move that door to Buckingham, don't wait and have us bring it up again, do it now. And, and if, if you, you don't wanna do all these, you know, if, you know, if you try and put a toilet room in, in tenant D and you're gonna obliterate one of the windows. You might think about just doing that as, you know, prior to, you know, bringing it back to us, because we're gonna approve the elevations and once we approve it, that's what we want you to build, of course.
I understand, um, we've done some preliminary interior layouts, uh, we weren't concerned with them then, but, uh, we'll look at it one more time.
I.
While, while we can't anticipate every potential.
Yep.
Um, we, uh, we recognize that, we, we wanna get this as accurate as possible.
And I'm no, and I'm no entrepreneur, I, I only bring it up as, as being an architect who, who'd look that and go, wow, where am I gonna put the restroom? But, hey, it, like I say, it's your building and, and, and the interior isn't really all matter all that much to us, you'll get into that more with the city officials than you will.
Understood.
That's cool.
Yep.
All right, that's all I got.
Okay, any other comments?
Amy, would you like to read some of those back?
I bet you wouldn't.
I think we covered everything.
Um, you're gonna revisit the parking arrangement, including the dumpster location, include a dumpster enclosure detail, site and fixture photometrics. Bicycle parking needs to be addressed, DPW comments, and the screen wall on Buckingham and the gate need to be removed and think the facades through. So that you can accommodate restrooms and what have you. Did I get it?
You got it?
Do you have comments from DPW? I don't believe I've seen.
I do, I'm sorry, I thought, I know we talked, it seems like ages ago about this, I do have them, I can get you a copy.
Okay, yeah.
Chair, I'd just like to ask, does the applicant, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time, I think we've vetted it pretty carefully.
Do you think you can be back here in our, to our January meeting with all of the changes that we can move forward?
When is the submission date, that's, I don't know with the holiday, you know?
She can tell you, when do you want him back?
The meeting's the twenty-seventh.
So you need it to twenty-sixth, right?
The morning twenty-seven. Need the twentieth, twenty-first, I don't know what you.
Somewhere between the sixth and the thirteenth.
Oh, really?
Yeah, well.
You think you can make that?
Yes.
Cause we can always move it another month.
Yeah, architects like to work on holidays.
We can always postpone it if we have to.
I think, I think we should be able to return it to you, uh, complete with all the comments.
I just don't know what DPW's schedule is, so that's why they have to look at it and, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, then we'll take a roll call vote.
Shadle?
Yes.
Tengari?
Yes.
Tengari, I'm sorry, Morel?
Yes.
Muirad?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes. Okay, so we're, you're off and running and, God, it isn't that bad a list.
We'll work on that first.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, good, good, fantastic.
Thank you. Moving along. I'll entertain citizens' comments, if there are any citizens who would care to address the planning commission, they may do so. Not, we'll move on, and I don't see any citizens, so we'll move on to liaison reports.
Chamber. Chamber, met last night, actually. I have my notes here, uh, they're scheduled in a couple of weeks to have a, another addition of the, the maps that I passed out a few months ago to everybody. They were such a hit, we're doing them again. Since they're starting to get more involvement of businesses from Huntington Woods, they've asked the city of Huntington Woods to add a liaison or two. So, uh, I think right now, I think I heard the city manager's gonna do it initially, gonna get a feel for what needs to be done. They said all the board meetings for next year, uh, and they sworn a couple new board members last night, as well as we have a new board president, vice president and secretary, so. So big changes going there. And that's about it for now.
Anything from the DVA?
They meet tomorrow morning.
Okay. Environmental?
We have not met since, uh, our last planning commission meeting, two weeks ago.
And I don't think anybody's on Parks and Rec anymore, doing anything with Parks and Rec, and I don't think I have anything else there.
They are, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I talked to a few people around the Parks and Rec the other night and they are asking that someone join, uh, be their liaison, so, just throwing that out. If anybody wants to volunteer.
So anybody who wants to volunteer and be a liaison to Parks and Rec on the planning commission?
Remember, it's been a while.
Unfortunately, my other commitment.
I know you're.
Yeah, that's why I, that's why I retired in the first place.
Well, everybody think about it and we can discuss it further. Uh, city council met last week and the most, a big chunk of the meeting was taken up with the audit of the city. And we're in pretty good shape according to our auditors, so that was the big, big item on the agenda, that we didn't have anything there. And, um, moving on, that was that meeting. And, uh, we have, there was also a meeting on the first of December, yeah, that was the one we had, I'm a little off. So, with that, I'll run around the room and see if we got any comments. Mr. Tengari?
None.
Ms. Buckler?
No.
Mr. Shadle?
Just happy holidays, it's been a lively year, I think, and, uh, wish everybody a happy and safe holiday.
Mr. Morel?
Nothing more than happy holidays, my friend.
Mr. Muirad?
Same, happy holidays to everybody.
Yes, Pop?
Happy holidays to everybody.
Mr. Richardson?
Well, I'm in the holiday spirit too, but I also have a couple of things.
Well, go right ahead.
I'd like to revisit, if I may, the resurfacing of, um, Coolidge between Webster and Twelve. I just have a couple of questions, I don't know if we're gonna get answers to them here tonight, but I'm gonna throw them out. I, I believe, if I understood correctly, at the last meeting we had, it was explained to us that, uh, it would not be possible for, uh, this state-funded resurfacing project to, um, include, um, either a bike path or additional sidewalk, or, uh, replacing the sidewalk that we have due to restrictions on the, uh, funding that's available. Is that, is that accurate?
Well, it's, my understanding is, is that MDOT will not allow you to just put an alternate out and then if the bids come in too high and you can't afford it, say, we're not gonna do that part of it. You have to commit to doing all of it and because of what's been budgeted, um, the feeling is, um, on the part of DPW, that we have probably enough money to do the road. If the bids come in really good, well, then we have a budget surplus, we have a surplus then, but we can't, they don't feel comfortable committing to doing a path or paths or sidewalk because they, they didn't budget it initially when HRC had said, well, we can put it out there and if the numbers come in good, then we can go ahead and do it, and MDOT's not allowing that.
Well.
Now, now I will say this, um, if, you know, this is gonna get done in the spring. If planning commission, city council feels strongly about it, we can budget a sidewalk or sidewalks for, and that, for the next fiscal year and that could get done if council decides that they wanna do that for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen year, and that could get done starting after July first. That's part of, you know, phase two of that project, but at this point, it was, it wasn't budgeted and it's, as you saw in my emails, I was frustrated that it had been presented that it was an option and, um, it, it's evidently not.
Let me, let me just throw this out, a, a, again, I, I don't know if I expect a, any kind of an answer even a comment, but I, I think it's something I'd like to, uh, I continue to pursue, pursue until I do get some answers. I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, MDOT, um, context-sensitive solutions implementation plan. Which, as I understand it, is the policy that's supposed to guide, um, MDOT-funded, um, uh, road projects, um, to assure that they're, um, planned and executed in a, a context-sensitive way, which I interpret to mean a multimodal way where feasible. And, um, a portion of that policy, paragraph five, um, talks about what MDOT is going to do to implement this policy. And it talks about, uh, MDOT partnering with local governments, uh, to plan and develop integrated planet, transportation infrastructure. It also says the MDOT will consider the need for integrated transportation, which again, I, I take to include, uh, multimodal transportation in the early project planning and development process stage for state transportation projects. And I'm just wondering if, 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 Ms. Vanson, if you or anyone in the city is aware of any MDOT efforts to implement what I've just read in, uh, road funding projects, not just Coolidge, but, uh, um, any projects pertaining to, to, to Berkeley. I mean, are, are you just, is, is any of this on your radar screen?
Well, it wouldn't be on mine, I'm, don't necessarily deal with MDOT, um, I would, I can certainly, um, let the DPW director know your concerns and I would urge you to talk with Derek Schuler, who's the DPW director, and, uh, you know, he was the one that communicated, has been in communication with MDOT relative to, um, the issue of, the issue I really think is the alternate, the fact that this was budgeted as a road project and in the early planning stages, I brought up the issue of the path. And, you know, it was presented that we could do an alternate since, instead of no, wait, we've gotta, you know, go back and we didn't budget for it.
Well, I don't wanna mount my high horse too, too readily here, but, um, certainly if you read this policy as a whole, and I'm not gonna do that tonight, but, um, it, it suggests that there's an element of flexibility in MDOT planning and funding activities that frankly appears to be lacking when it comes to this particular project we're talking about. So, if, if there's anyone in the city that can enlighten us about what this policy may actually mean for road funding and, uh, projects. I would like, I'd be appreciative of, of getting that information and seeing if it relates to what we're, we're trying to do here.
I will absolutely follow up with the DPW director on that.
The other thing is slightly different, but, um, we have been talking about sidewalks or bike paths. Um, I'm now looking at the Berkeley, uh, complete streets policy. And, um, uh, page seven, uh, paragraph two, um, says that before any, any road resurfacing project is imminent, administration should review cross-sections of major streets and determine if restriping with a bike lane or wide right lane can be done. Um, I'm just, again, I'm not trying to preach and say, yes, it must be done, I'm just, this speaks to process.
Right.
Has that been looked at?
Yes.
Okay, and, and what, what's the result?
The result was that, no, there wasn't room for it, but let's put in a path or paths and replace those because they're, you know, the asphalt was problematic. My position in that preliminary meeting was that we should replace the asphalt one that runs along the cemetery because the master plan says it could be either or. And that the one that is missing in pieces along the west side of Coolidge should be taken out, that was my position. And I was told that that was a possibility with an alternate. And then it came before you and you said, we wanna have two paths, and, and you saw my communication to the DPW director that, um, you know, one eight-foot path or two five-foot ones is what the planning commission wanted, and then we were told that, no, that can't happen.
Well, um, thank you for that, uh, information, I'm not sure, uh, if we covered that explicitly in, in previous meetings, we may have. But, um, in getting back to the MDOT policy, um, if there is information available that.
Yeah, I will follow up with Derek Schuler and have him get back to you on that.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Mr. Martin Smith?
Nothing to add, sir.
Ms. Vanson?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, okay, I don't have anything this evening, just to wish everybody a happy holidays and a happy new year. So with that, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Morel?
At six fourteen, I move we adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? A second, Mr. Muirad, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
You have now held a meeting shorter than Eric that has lasted negative.